Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Thank you. Now I'm going to ask the board to come down into the audience and we're going to ask our administrative team to present the Start Strong assessments from 2021, please.
So, a little bit of background for the Start Strong testing. It was a part of the waiver that was required by federal, by the federal testing mandate in order for us to forego NJSLA this past spring. It was a short test and I'll explain a little bit more as we go on. It does not replace, some notes, local standards. The state has also been very strong in their message that this does not predict our coming NJSLA results that will be taking place this spring. A little bit more information. All of this test, these tests were based on information from the standards from last year, the previous grade level of the students. It is, again, not indicative of anything that's to come and it was used just as a guideline for where teachers might want to start. It did use items from the NJSLA bank and, again, it's not predictive of the test that's coming up. It was a short test. It was just about forty-five to sixty minutes. We took it in October. Students seemed to go through it fairly quickly. It is important to note that some of these students had never taken a standardized test before, so this was their first exposure to that. So we're hoping that that will help a little bit as we go into the testing for this coming year. Individual student score reports were also mailed home for any students that took this and if you have not received that, please get in touch with your principal. So, as I mentioned before, the content alignment is from the grade level before. So if you have a student who's currently in grade four, the content of the assessment was grade three and you can see that continues for all subject areas. Interestingly enough, or you may ask how students that were in Algebra I or Geometry or Algebra II were assessed and what they did was they took the standards from the grade eight learning standards that were aligned with any of those subjects and that's what they tested those students on. I mentioned before about that it doesn't necessarily indicate exactly where students are. We've been warned not to compare student, school, or state data for this test and we also must remember that our students have been in and out because of quarantine or parent choice for home instruction. So this is what it looks like. You can see each grade level that was tested in English Language Arts. It is split into three categories. The first being more support needed, the next some support needed, and less support needed. So it goes from a student who needs more support, may need additional help with a particular standard, all the way up to less support needed. It is, in some ways, where we expected students to be, knowing that a lot of them had interrupted education, were not always online, and struggled with connecting from home. Oops. The same thing with the math. Again, it's the exact same system, more support needed, some support needed, and less support needed. The difference here is that Algebra, Geometry, and Geometry are split by middle school and high school and that is obviously because students take it at different times depending. The other thing that you should know is that the eighth grade results across just the plain grade eight are not indicative either of grade eight because about thirty, they said thirty thousand students from across the state, only thirty thousand students took that, that, sorry, thirty thousand students took Algebra I across the state. So it pulled a lot of students out of that grade eight line. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gail.
Thank you and good evening. So the science grade level, this test, even when we do NJSLA, doesn't really count for anything, just helps identify students in some of the areas in need of improvement. So this was a good way to just look at the students or identify them, to give them additional support and you can kind of see as the percentages, there's not this really drastic difference between the percentages, is there kind of almost a third, a third, and a third? And the good news is Ms. Mahabhir and her team have just implemented a new science program, K to five, so we anticipate that in the next few years, we're just going to see more and more students pushed into the other area of some support. But for now, those teachers are all working with those students to, to give them extra support. The next few slides, you're going to see the subgroup by race. They're, they're very similar as we break it down over ELA, math, and science. Overall, the Asian group of students performed with seventy-four percent needing less support and our Black, Hispanic, and White groups have larger percentages, more support. So these results just helped us identify students so that we can, you know, kind of accelerate their learning and give them a little additional support, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. But you'll, if you just take a second to look at those scores, and then finally the, The next subgroup is by gender and very, the females and males, very similar. The little edge on the females on ELA with the sixty-seventh percent needing less support, but you can see when we go to math, it's almost exact all the way across and also with science. So our, our boys and girls are doing about the same kind of performance. We're not seeing any weakness overall with just males or just females. And then these are our subgroups. The Freem, the students on Freem reduced lunch, 504s, our English language learners. This makes sense when you look at the students who needed a lot of support, seventy-seven percent of our English language learners in the ELA, the test, and obviously we identified those students and we have programs where we're working with them. Our special ed and then our jet end overall have a sixty-nine percent with less support. And that kind of carries through as you'll see with the math. And then finally the science. Okay, and the last slide is, so what have we done for our students? So Mr. Ladd and his team has really worked on the sheltered instruction for ELL students, okay? So what happens here is there is a focus on content as well as the acquisition of the language, okay? So teachers are being trained to work specifically with our English language learners in smaller groups and we're giving them very focused attention, not just on improving their language skills, but also on the content and teaching the content in a way that the students can learn it without having to spend hours and hours translating. So he's been building that program and they're doing well there. We focused on equitable instructional strategies where we're challenging all of our students, right? So whatever level they're at, we're meeting them where they are and just challenging them to improve. All of our students need to meet the standards and then work beyond. And our focus has been every decision that's made is around what are the needs of the students and we're giving them as much support as possible. There's a lot of project-based learning going on because this allows for a deeper dive into the learning where it's not just surface material of who, what, where, but how is this happening? Why is this happening? It also allows students to focus on their interests and to demonstrate their understanding of concepts in multiple ways, which also gives the teachers a better look at the understanding of the students, not just on scores and results. This year, there was a big adjustment of pacing, mostly in the math. So when they look at trying to help these kids on remote, math was very difficult to teach remotely and so forth. So as these kids came back to school, we wanted to make sure that we were giving them everything they needed to be successful, not only in this year, but moving forward. And you can't do that if you're going to cover all of the material that we did in the past. We knew we had to spend more time on it. So the supervisor, Ms. Lael, Ms. Ramaldi, and their teams sat down and really looked at what concepts absolutely have to be taught and we're going to spend more time on them, make sure the kids know them so that they can be also successful in the next year because obviously we still need to move them through all the levels of the math. Certainly working with restorative practices to keep the kids in school, social emotional strategies coming out of the pandemic. The students really needed to learn how to be students again, so within the classes, we're helping them to self-regulate and become self-aware and make good decisions about their own learning. We're focused on asset-based learning, so the students' strengths are what we're looking at. How do we build, instead of identifying deficits and trying to fix it, we're looking at where are the, where do they do well and how do we build on that to give them that sense of success as we're coming back out of the pandemic? And summer acceleration courses, we offered them this year and they were such a success that we're going to continue, which is again, instead of, okay, you're going to go to the summer to make up for maybe what you didn't learn or maybe what you're not doing well, instead, we're preparing them for where they're headed. So if they were in Algebra and now they're headed to Geometry, that summer course is about geometry. We're going to give them the skills that they need ahead of time to give them a head start in being successful. And we knew that they were going to have some deficits, so this summer, we worked on building all of that and we will continue to do that. And of course, with the grants from the state, we have these SR funds and there have been small groups building the skills of students and working extra with students before school, after school, even on Saturdays, to meet with teachers, to give them more support in ELA and math. Thank you.
Some great stuff there. I'm sure the board members might have a comment or two or a question. We're going to move on to public comments, resolutions only.
Board President?
Yes.
Sorry. Can we get a, a copy of the slide presentation after the meeting?
Yes.
Just for my own knowledge, we have a breakdown of the, the students who need additional support, no support is needed. Can you share with me what is the full score and what is a breakdown of each category on the score? Is it like a ten, is, is you need support and fifteen, you don't need support? Understand the question?
If you're asking me that, Mr. Shi, I don't have that information off the top of my head, but we can get that for you, what the cut scores were and the raw scores that they use for these assessments.
Yeah, just want to see what's a breakdown of each. No, 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 no rush today.
Okay. We'll try to get it tomorrow and we'll get it to the floor.
No, no, no rush. It's okay. I just want to have a, you know, some idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. We're going to move to public comments, resolutions only. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern of, to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others, under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of their legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Comments on resolutions only. Matt, thank you.
Thank you. Matt Revnack, ETA Vice President. I'm here to speak about posting and possible appointment of two positions in softball coaching here at JP Stevens and I'm asking that the board consider possibly tabling the positions. Two positions are being given to, at a district people. We had applicants within the district that applied for the positions, that are qualified people, they're teachers here in district, two of them are right here at JP Stevens, and we're trying to figure out why this is the case. Thirty-three years ago, when I began teaching and went to my interview with then Superintendent Charlie Boyle, when he looked at my resume, one of the things he asked me was, wow, you're very involved in like sports. I was an umpire, I played baseball, I manage, et cetera. You interested in coaching? I said, absolutely. His response was, that's great because we always like to have good coaches that are on our staff. It seems like our district is getting away from that. A number of our coaches are not here within the district, not here within the building, and we have qualified applicants and people that are. The ETA has been asked a number of times by various superintendents, why aren't your people coaching? And our answer, yeah, our salary guide isn't the greatest for coaches, but we make a little more in our regular salaries and that makes up for it. You don't get into coaching for the money. But it's more about the working conditions and the toxicity, as I was told today by someone, down in that area. There's people that don't want to coach in this building for who's running the show. Quite honestly, there's coaches that have resigned and left that are coaching in other districts. We have young coaches here, like for example, there's a young lady at John Adams that put in for the position, wasn't even given an interview. I know the girl. She played softball with my daughter. Christ sakes, we can't even give her an interview? Last night, when I emailed her to ask her to call me, she responded, I'm not interested, I'm coaching elsewhere now. And this is what's happening, we're losing good, young people. At five o'clock this evening, I got a call from a parent, a softball parent, asking me about the positions and why, because quite honestly, she said, the parents want Ms. Nixon. She's an established coach, she's been coaching for years. The parent told me that there's a parent that had, another parent that had called Dr. Bregan, I guess last week, and spoke to him about it. And we don't understand why this is happening. Quite honestly, it took me a matter of minutes last night to go and find, and I'm not going to speak about credentials, it wouldn't be proper to do. But I got two pages on one person and I didn't even print everything out, only because I wasn't going to use all my paper and printer ink at home, about the person that was not getting the position. Two-time academic All-American in a college, Player of the Year in a conference, in the record books for almost every possible category you can have, and is a player that coached here last year as a assistant coach. What's going on? And one of the concerns for the parent was, and even as far as the association, yeah, we want to see it kept in. We have contract language that says that when every effort should be made to give it to a member of the collective bargaining unit. Two people aren't. NJSLA 3413-23 says, in order, a person that has a certificate, New Jersey Teaching Certificate, goes to in district first. If there's no one that applies a qualified in district, then you can hire at a district. And if you don't have someone, then you can appoint someone in district. That's the law. This came up a few years ago in the Dr. O'Malley at Edison High School, ironically in softball as well, and he overturned it. As a former coach and as the parents that called me today, their concern also was the kids. We talk about social, emotional learning and bringing the kids back. There's no better person to have than a person that's a teacher in the building with them. You get to know the kids. You monitor their academics. You talk to and communicate with their teachers. The kid has access to you anytime during the day for the most part, when they have a problem or concern. We don't understand what's going on here. We want to do what's best for the kids too. And that's not an at-a-district person. If there's no one in district qualified, no one in district that puts in, that's a different situation, understandable. But we have qualified applicants here. What we're telling people is, guess what? You know, we sit here and over the last year, praise the great job the teachers are doing, but to hell with you, you're not good enough to coach my sport. You got a problem with that. It should be given to people in district. So I'm asking the board to consider tabling the two, take a look at it, you know, and reevaluate the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Revnack. Before we move on to any other public comments, Dr. Bregan, are we confident that, as a board member, I just want to make sure that we're doing this hiring in an ethical, legal, as per the contract, are we confident that we're following all procedures?
A hundred percent. And actually reviewed the legislation that was referenced by the ETA Vice President with our board attorney, as well as the contract language in our collective bargaining agreements, and we have followed all those parameters. I think there were some generalizations that was made by Mr. Revnack and some references that don't apply to all situations. The superintendent, the principal, the athletic directors, were committed to hiring the most qualified people for the jobs. There's a process in place to do that. We followed that process, we followed all the parameters of the law and the collective bargaining agreement, and those accusations that were made are just patently false. We value our coaches, we value our teachers, and to make a generalization related to a specific incident, I think sometimes the assumption is that if somebody didn't go the way they wanted to, there's some type of malfeasance. Simply not accurate, Mr. Revnack, Mr. Baden, and any member of the ETA that would like to meet with me and discuss it, I'd be more than willing to do so. We followed all the parameters, legal, as well as the collective bargaining agreement, Mr. Board President.
Public comments, resolutions only. Cristo?
Board President, is it standard operating procedure for you to start off the public comments on the resolutions with threatening members of the public? This is the second time already. Is this going to become your standard operating procedure? I've heard your disclaimer that you're reading to threaten members of the public with, and I'd like to tell you, it's, it's very limited to what any of you can sue. Defamation or whatever.
Resolutions only.
Okay, I'll come back to that later. Shiwi knows very well about that, but I'll come back to that later.
Resolutions only, please.
So for any of these resolutions, are you going to take yourself out due to conflict of interest? I see there's personnel, labor relations. Are you going to abstain on any, any of that? Do you think that you should have pulled yourself out from voting for any of those Given that you are connected to the teachers' union, NJEA, and others, I, I don't understand how you or others up there can even vote on personnel. Is there any friends and family members of yours that are being voted on today, Douglas That's a question, that's a legitimate question. Are you just going to look at me like?
No, I'll answer your question.
Looking off into another galaxy? I just asked you a question. Are you going to respond to that?
You're, keep asking and then when you're finished, I'll answer your question.
Okay. Very unprofessional to be threatening members of the public at the start of everyone's public comments. People wouldn't let Jerry get away with it. I don't know why people are letting you get away with it.
Resolutions only, please.
I am, I'm getting onto the resolution. Hold on a sec. Simmer it down, simmer it down. So for the revised settlement agreement, would I be able to know, Board Attorney, if I take the reference number or any of these, would I be able to find, find out what the settlement to this is?
I don't know. I'd have to consult with the administration on exactly what the terms of the settlement are so I could determine whether they're privileged or not, so I don't know the answer of, answer to your question.
Would, would this be a sexual harassment case, sexual assault case? We have up to ten so far. Is this another? Do you know about that?
I, I can't give you any better answer than I just did, sir.
Can't give me any answer than you just did?
That's correct.
So Board President, would you like to answer my questions while I'm up here now? So, which was my first question, are any of your friends or family members being voted on today?
I'm happy to answer any questions you have after you're finished asking your questions.
You can, you are the Board President, you could answer it now if you'd like.
You're, you're correct.
Is that because you just don't like and you want to waste my time and you don't want to back and forth for more accountability and transparency? Are we just shutting down the accountability and transparency?
Resolutions only, please.
Okay. Yeah, I'm talking about the resolution. I'm asking why, why you're still not answering. If it's a no, it's a no. If it's a yes, it's a yes. I just want to know. Do you feel that you should have took, took yourself out on voting on some of these resolutions You can feel a sort of way, you don't feel a sort of way? I don't understand how you're going to finish your term nonstop and most of the time, you're not going to be able to be voting on some items, specifically when it comes to people's contracts. So one thing I'd like to know, because I know when I walk away, you're not going to answer anyway, do you know any of the people whose contracts, are you friends with them? Do you go out in the bars, have a beer with them? Are you related to them?
Is this related to the resolution?
Yes, the resolution, number one, personnel, labor relations. I don't think I should have to read off everyone's name. I'll just cut to the chase and say, hey, this is just one of them. Should you have removed yourself from voting for any of them? Is there any other members that may, might have relatives that are working in the school district? I know at least one.
Thank you very much.
You're not welcome.
To answer your question, I am not related to anyone on this personnel agenda. Thank you. Any other questions related to the, the, the agenda, the resolutions only? The agenda, the resolutions only. Ms. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. I just have one simple question. On the JP Stevens softball coach assignments, I don't want to talk about any individual, but are any of the four that are on the list from out of district? And if that's the case, I know for many years, we did reach out to outsiders rather than promote from within. And I firmly believe that we have moved in a positive direction, but I'm not too sure about this. And if the case is that all four, I see one is transferred from another school, so I can tell you, one is definitely, but I would just like it on the record that all four are from within the school district. That's it.
All four are not from the teaching ranks. Two of the coaches there are young ladies who actually played at Jompe Stevens High School softball.
Revnack? Good evening. I don't know what difference it has for the public comment for this resolution versus the last time for the attorney's one, but anyway, I'm going to come back on the public comments on that. But Dr. Bregan, I think, you know, as I have hinted you in the last meeting, there is something cooking, I'm going to say strongly outside. And I think whatever you do, they are trying to find faults with you. I just wanted to tell you that we are there. So sometimes, as I said, you don't need to be responsible for every personal appointment. You need to delegate that as a leader, supreme, or CEO of this school district. You trust your principals, you trust your head coaches, you trust your staff to take the decision, and I truly want that. And in fact, I know Doug, your intent may be right, but you asking Dr. Bregan that, are we following the process? I think the rush that you showed in hiring the attorney, the rush you showed in visiting the schools, you should have done that process of hiring. Since you have a family member who are in the school, you could have done that homework much before, even asking it. And I think Dr. Bregan has proved for the last three years who he is, how he's been doing it, how he's been doing it. We, many of the parents, still support his decision making. And moreover, and I think if my kid is John Adams, Dr. Valentine, I trust her more before even I trust Dr. Bregan. So that's where I feel that Dr. Bregan, that you have an efficient school principals and head coaches that are running it. And obviously, there are two sides of the coin that how these persons have been appointed, who is recommending it. I know there are people that are pushing you to create new positions and promote certain people, and I wish and hope that with your all strong experience, you will be able to take an informed decision rather than putting, giving up to the pressure of external entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on resolutions only? Can I have a motion to approve the first item there, the personnel, labor relations item?
Motion.
Motion from Biril Patel.
Am I, me?
Second, Mr. Shi. Roll call.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moham Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
I have to abstain on coaching, but everything else, yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion is carried. With one abstain regarding the coaching.
Thank you. We have item two, administration. Item three, curriculum and instruction. And item four, pupil and special services. Can I have a motion to approve those? Motion, Mr. Biril Patel.
Second.
A second, Ms. Sheevi Matiger. Roll call.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moham Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, can I have a motion to approve the finance resolutions?
Motion.
Motion.
Mr. Shi?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Matiger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moham Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion is carried.
Thank you. Moving on for our upcoming meetings, we have, at Edison High School, on Thursday, February 10th, we have our caucus meeting. And on Tuesday, February 15th, we have our public action meeting, and that's also at Edison High School at 7:00. So we'll see you in just a few weeks. I want to move to Board Members' open discussion. I'd like to start up top with Mr. Shi.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First, this is about, you know, last week, we had a delayed opening. It was very cold, and I know the contract has 15 minutes before the first bell. Is it possible we can look into, open up the doors, and have the students in the gym or in a bigger area, you know, have some supervision? I know they cannot go to the classroom, that's fine, but at least let them get into the classroom in a bigger area so it's a little bit warm. So that's the first question. And the second is that we talked before last month and the month before about late grading and grading not entered in the parent portal. And I know as of today, we still have, math teachers have not entered the math grades at JP Stevens. Is it possible we can have the curriculum committee or whoever just to look into whether we can have a policy in place to make sure that the grades are entered in time for our students, especially when it comes to math and science and those kind of stuff? So that's my second question. And the third one is, I hope Dr. Bregan will give us some good news. Usually in February, we open up the enrollment for kindergarten. Last year, we had several discussions about the possibility of bringing back full day kindergarten. And you mentioned that you're going to work with Mrs. Moham here to collect some data and do some analysis to see if we can bring full day kindergarten back. Now we are close to February, and the parents will be soon starting to enroll their kids in the kindergarten program. Full day and half day makes a big difference. So I hope that you have some good news for us. If not, you know, you can come back next month. So three questions, open door earlier, enter the grades in time, and full day kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shi. Regarding the 15 minutes before, I mean, when I was the vice principal here, I think it was 7:15 or so, we would tend to regularly let students in. But we did review this, not just with Dr. Schout, but with the other buildings as well, especially during times of inclement weather. If we could let the children that get here earlier in, obviously, they can't get into the classrooms because our instructional staff aren't here, but we will have some support staff, if not administrative supervisor, perhaps auditorium or cafeteria or something, again, especially when it's extremely cold or if it happens to be raining out or snowing. The grading in the parent portal, we do have an expectation that that'll be up to date and as timely as possible, but we will speak to the building administration about going over that with our staff. I know sometimes when there's a major test or something, it takes a little while to get those scores, get all those tests graded and scored into the Genesis parent portal, but we will speak to the administration and talk to the teachers about that.
Thank you.
Full day kindergarten, well, that was a goal when I got hired as the superintendent two Decembers ago, 2019. It's a discussion that Mr. Shi and we had with our finance committee in November, December perhaps, as we were looking at and trying to plan the budget and go over some of our staffing needs across the district and across the buildings. I've had some preliminary conversations with our current Board President, and we're going to present some ideas at a curriculum committee meeting, which I believe is next week we're scheduled to meet. And I don't want to speak for anyone before that committee, but we'll have, I would believe we would have a decision at that meeting whether we can proceed with a full day kindergarten program or not, because as you said, Mr. Shi, that deadline for enrollment is fast approaching in early in February. Thank you.
Yeah, with the purchase of the Our Savior Church, hope we can accommodate that. Looking forward for the good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
I just wanted to piggyback off of Mr. Shi, because he made some interesting statements. So one of the things that we have created in my district is we have an inclement weather team. So we have about four teachers, four staff members actually come in and supervise a large area. So maybe that's something that the district could look into as a, to assist you and assist parents with that, an inclement weather team. The other thing regards to grading and inputting, I know some districts already have a policy. When they actually give an assignment, there's a certain limit or a certain time that assignments do have to be put into the system. The other thing I want to keep in mind too, is I spoke to a lot of teachers here too, and a lot of them are covering classes, they're losing their preps. Usually when they lose during the prep time is when they're inputting grades, doing grading and stuff like that. So I also want to feel or give our teachers a little bit leniency. You know, they are covering classes, they are working very hard, but I definitely don't want that taken away from them. And full day kindergarten, Mr. Shi, I hope we get that. It's a little late now, one of my kids in K now, so he'll be coming to first grade, but you know, the sooner the better. The other thing I wanted to speak...
We have a new batch coming every year.
So, you know, I'm looking forward for that because that's a lot of the parents' concerns. The other thing I wanted to say is we saw a lot of great things, you know, it's my 24th day being on the board, and I think we've accomplished a lot of good things. I'm looking forward to working with this board. Dr. Bregan, the only thing that I had a concern is with the presentation with Start Strong. I saw a lot of kids having strong issues where they need that extra assistance, but I didn't see it broken down by school. So I was just curious what schools actually need that intervention more versus some of the schools that don't need as much? And what programs do we have in place to help those kids? And how quickly are we going to turn around to get the supports to these kids? Because we're already in February. We've got five more months of school left, and these kids are behind. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Board President. Great points, Ms. Rivera, and you know, great questions too. Regarding the breakdown by school, we do have that data, and we could share that data with the full board, I believe, tomorrow. We'll get that to you guys. We have that. And as well as, you know, how's the data going to be used? It's already been distributed to teachers and instructional staff, so they have been using it to work on their improvement plans and their data plans and how they're going to use the data within their classrooms to help make sure the students meet with mastery on the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. But there are, we could share more of that information as time goes on with the board and give you more updates on that. As I said, the teaching staff members as well as the administrative team have had that data for a bit of time, have reviewed it, and been using that to, you know, determine their formative assessments and their instructional practices in the classrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Okay. Actually, I have two things. Okay, I just want to give you a little update on the parent help desk. This is ticket activity from November 19th through January 20th. The help desk, the total calls for all departments was 1,889. They closed 1,352 tickets, and 537 remained open as of January 20th. The breakdown is transportation received 85, they closed two, 83 are still open. Enrollment was 43, they closed 42, and one was open. Food service had two calls and closed two calls. And special services had one, closed one, and there are zero. Technology, as always, and they're always on top of everything, had 1,758 calls. They closed 1,305, and as of January 20th, there were 453, and those are probably taken care of by now. So please, use the parent help desk. You know, it's, you know, a good tool, and it'll help you, and it'll help us to improve. I have one other thing, this is off topic actually, but I think, you know, I just wanted to say this. Edison lost an amazing person. Bill Gianpola was an inspiration for so many. He was an outstanding leader and was a major part of youth sports from 1973 through 1998. He served our community as president of Edison Boys Baseball League, Edison Jets Football League. He touched the lives of Edison's youth and their families, and his contribution to our community is still visible in our town's youth sports programs today. He was a wonderful human being in every way possible and a true friend and mentor to all who knew him. He will be greatly missed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
Board President?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Shi.
Yeah, can I add something else since Mrs. White mentioned the parent help desk? I do appreciate that, you know, the team sent us the numbers, and moving next month or whatever, can we get a cycle time of all these tickets? How many tickets are resolved? Let's say, you know, a week, and some a little bit breakdown, you know, so we can see how responsive the folks are when these issues got raised. And also, I remember I mentioned before, curriculum, extracurriculum, let's add it on if we can. And also generate a case number for every ticket so we can easily follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me, Douglas. All right, the case numbers are automatically generated. When people call a number, the system automatically generates a number, so everybody does get a number. We are in the process of expanding this. We, you know, we have a meeting scheduled, and we are going to include other, you know, other things, actually pretty much everything that Mr. Shi is saying. I also wanted to include the parent portal on it as well, you know, because I know people do have difficulty getting through to that at times. So, you know, it is always a work in progress. Be patient, you know, we're going to do wonderful things with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Rivera.
I just wanted to make sure I heard this right. From November to January, there's 1,758 technology tickets?
Yes.
Wow.
I think, let me check it. Sure, Brian.
Is that all, Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, I was just, it's a larger number, so I was just...
Mr. Patel.
Just to go over, we went over the numbers for the assessments and so forth. Do we have anything in place where we have life skills assessments that we do for our students in general? And if not, is there any way we can get some kind of basis for that to get started? Maybe in the summertime where they can learn regular life skills. We do the financial literacy for our high school students, and in terms of other skills, we could definitely be able to offer them, because a lot of our kids are not getting all that how-to knowledge from home, so it's good that we actually give them that base from school. So when they become adults, they can be functioning adults in regards to maybe even fixing some stuff or doing their own ironing of their clothes and so forth. So just like, in general basis, if we could get some life skills assessment, that would be great too, earlier on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Biril Patel.
Yeah, I would just like to applaud the supervisors, Dr. Rose, all the staff members, teachers, and the wonderful students of Edison High School. Few of us happened to visit the multicultural fair last Friday. It was awesome. It really represents a diverse culture and the diversity in our district, and it was phenomenal how the children worked so hard and put that together. So there is a video out there on YouTube, so everyone feel free to see that, but really appreciate everyone's work in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Ms. Podolsky?
Yes, the one thing, I have two things, that's all. The one thing is in reaction to the Start Strong presentation, is we should be doing something about these weaknesses that we're seeing, and I know... that we're seeing. And I know in the past, we had morning academies in some of the schools where we could address specific targeted needs. And the one thing that was impressive about that in our results was when you're getting the children early in the day, when they're fresh, in a small group with teachers, and you're targeting small amounts of things, and then they go on with the rest of their day, as does the teacher for that. It really helped us in a low budget format, make a lot of improvement in the children, sometimes just psychologically because they got to come in early and be in a small group with a teacher. The other thing is a real positive thing, I'm starting to see letters coming in for my favorite day, Read Across America Day, which will be in March, and I've seen that most of the ones that have come in have talked about virtual readers, which will definitely make sure they get a lot more takers, I think, because not everyone is willing, nor do we want everyone to be coming in and reading to the children in the classrooms physically. So those are my two things. One is something I'm a little concerned about, and one suggestion about a way we could move on it a little quickly. And the other is one of my favorite days, just Read Across America Day, and I like the idea that teachers are already suggesting you can read virtually, or you could come in, or one way or the other. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Madiger?
Thanks, Doug. So this is something I actually talked to Dr. Breagan this afternoon, which was about opening the doors early, and not just for inclement weather, but throughout the year, because if there's a bigger window to drop students to school, there'd be less congestion on the roads, because, you know, parents can drop kids, especially the ones who are walkers and the ones who get dropped. The second thing I wanted to mention was the full day kindergarten. I'm very excited about that. And I'm looking forward to hearing what the curriculum, what, the details in the curriculum committee. I actually got involved, you know, started attending school board meetings when full day kindergarten was taken away, 2010, 2011. So this is kind of, you know, just bringing everything to a full circle, and so just very, very happy about that. That's all. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Just a quick note, this is probably our last meeting where we're going for the year that we're not going to have committee reports. So typically at this meeting each month, you'll hear from our committee chairs, and it'll be a lot less of us talking and a lot more of everyone else talking. And we'll share with you what the committees are doing. It's going to be a little bit different than minutes. Our idea here is to transparently make sure everyone knows the hard work that everyone's doing. We're going to have highlights of the meetings. We're, we're going to highlight the things that are most important, that the public needs to take away from the, from what's going on with these committees. Sometimes there's a perception that it might be like a clandestine thing where these things are happening in secret and you don't necessarily know what's going on behind the curtain. So what we're going to be able to do is really bring the public up to speed on a monthly basis as to what we're doing. So it's, it's very exciting, and again, this should be the last meeting that we're not having that because as everyone knows, from Thursday's caucus meeting, we do have a committee structure now in place. With that said, I'd like to move to public comments.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
You missed Mrs. Penn.
Mrs. Penn. Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. I just want to say thank you for-
Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Gil and Bernina for providing that Star Strong analysis. I, I think I might miss it, but I, I just want to ask, we are going to have some, if we're going to have some summer sessions to help those students who's falling behind. I hope, you know, we can let the parents know, because the parents do get a letter for their child's assessment score. So they would know that if their child needs support. So if we have some classes opening for the summer for them, we need to let the parents know earlier so they can start schedule. And also, I hope those classes will be free for the, the students at least. Also, another thing, Star Strong is the test that's totally brand new, so we don't have any comparison from before. But we do have, and, and a lot of students are, didn't take the Star Strong. For example, some high school students didn't take math. If they're 10th grader, 9th grader, they might probably not taking math, but they could also, there could be also a problem there, but they don't know because they didn't take the test. They didn't take the test for that subject. But they do take the PSAT test last year, so I hope we could, and that's something we can compare from a lot of years previously. So I hope we could get some analysis for that also, so we can see if some students are falling behind on math or, or English. At least we could potentially identify some of the problem there. That's all, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies.
Great points on that, and we will look into all that, as you mentioned, Ms. Penn.
I'd like to move to public comments, open discussion. Ms. Orkin?
Hi, Maria Orkin, 83 Jefferson. Mohan, you stole my thunder. My first question is, what kind of life skills are we teaching to the students? Like how to give change when you go into the store, balancing a checkbook, following a recipe, sewing, or how to sign your check? My next question is another subject. Are there any air purifiers in each classroom? How is the spacing while the students changed from one classroom to another? Next item. How are we helping students or teachers in need? Currently, we have high opioid issue and drug addictions. How are we helping them? Next issue. Are we upgrading our gym equipment? I see some gym classes are lacking, using old nets, balls. Next issue. How are we welcoming the community with our diversity and inclusion? We will be needing volunteers for our beautiful Edison in the next coming months. We have programs of our community cleanups and planting gardens in Swales Park. So we would need volunteers. Also, the sustainable green team would need volunteers to help celebrate Earth Day in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want me to address some of those questions?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Orkin, for asking those questions and for always for your comments. Regarding the life skills instruction, typically many of those things that you mentioned are taught and embedded within the curriculum in some different classes. And specifically they're taught, as Mr. Mohan Patel said, that we can assess it. Specifically, they're taught to some of our students with special needs, who have maybe some challenges that require specific instruction in some of those skills. Some of the other skills are taught within, embedded in, you know, the financial literacy courses, some of our math courses, and some other things. But we'll take a look at that. It's good advice. You know, I have three daughters, and sometimes as bright as they are, they lack in common sense in some of the things that we take for granted. We have to make sure our kids are prepared for. So, great points. Air purifications in each class, we don't have that. We did have the univentilators that were sanitized both at the beginning of the school year and again during the Christmas holiday break. So we try to make sure that they were provided with the antimicrobial that will kill any viruses and things for a period of time, and we'll make sure that's revisited. But specific purifiers per se, we don't have those in each class. Regarding helping teachers and staff in need and students, we're trying to be attentive as best we can. We do have programs in, in our district through our Human Resources Department that are supportive with staff, running through the Rutgers Program for those that are in need, as well as for students that are in need too. But those are things we could always look at and make sure that we're doing all we can to make sure we meet those needs of our staff and students, especially during these difficult times. Spacing in the hallways, I think you mentioned, Mrs., Ms. Orkin. We can't really maintain social distancing in our hallways. Anyone that's been in our schools know that we can't do that. We do have our students and staff, the expectation that they will wear masks when we do that, and when they're going through those areas to help mitigate any possible spread of not just coronavirus, but the regular flu or whatever. But that's really not possible in, in, in our buildings, in our hallways, to the greatest extent possible, though we do try to do that. Updating of gym equipment and things like that, we try to do that on a regular basis. If there's specific concerns or needs that aren't being met, I know some of the expected modifications and upgrades that we're doing for this year at Edison High School include their auditorium upgrade, that hopefully be up and running for September, as well as the cafeteria in both JP Stevens and Edison High School for HVAC upgrades. So those are ongoing and continuous, but if there's specific things mentioned to the building principal, I have the children mention to their staff in the buildings, and we'll try to make sure that gets on our agenda for the next budget season. How do we welcome diversity and inclusion, I think was one of your questions as well, and, and we try to do our best with that. As I think Mr. Bureau Patel mentioned, there was a multicultural fair at Edison High School that was really well received and well attended, and it was an opportunity for our students themselves to take the initiative to celebrate their cultures and the diversity within our school. And it was exciting to see, and it was exciting to hear the students take great pride in their heritage, which is, I think, one of our greatest strengths in not just the school, but in our community, is our diversity. But it's also one of our challenges, right, to make sure we all respect each other and get along. Along those lines, one of the things that we did hire this year, and she just started working in January, is our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer, Ms. Hatisha Patel, who's doing a great job, and she's going to help us along those lines as well. So, thank you, Mr. Board President.
Thank you. Very thorough response. Mr. Venkat?
Yeah. Dr. Breagan, half of the year is over, marking period two. So usually, I start with good news, so that's the only good news that today that I have. So thank you to you and your staff for, you know, taking us for the half of the year successfully. Thank you very much. And coming to Mr. Doug, last week, I have watched the clip again and again, the rush that your Vice President, Shivie, has showed to move it to the motion. The association that she has, close association she had, she has with the law firm. In 2017, she referred the same firm, and the same firm, same attorney was recommended and hired, then another attorney was shared. In 2010 to 2020, if you see, that firm has charged a lot to us. And I don't want to do the Oprah, if needed, I will do it. So considering your Vice President relationship with the firm's leadership and the party association, since my rebuttal was removed, you guys are forcing me to file an ethics complaint of non-conflict of interest, because the attorney was board attorney, and every board member has to interview, but one person pushed to hire, rushed, it was evidences clearly on the last meeting. So I think you guys give me no option by removing my rebuttal. Usually, I want to give three months to you guys to work without like honeymoon period, but now you guys are forcing me. First time, I'm going to file an ethics complaint about her conflict of interest. Number two, would it, the suppression of the public comments on the attorney resolution, you're right, I went through all the laws, it's your prerogative. But what was the rationale when a custom was already established to take the public feedback? We would have helped you guys to understand that association of your Vice President with that firm. You didn't give us the chance. You guys made everybody to vote, and only you and Shi has interviewed. I think that is something as actually causing that biased nature towards one person. So the third thing is, removing the rebuttal, if you look at your Edison Board of Ed Rules 167, Rule Number Three, it clearly states, no participant may speak more than once on same topic until all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. That itself clearly says that the rebuttal is allowed. And moreover than the law, the custom, it's been going on for the last three, four years. The council is also allowing it, and you removed without announcing it. So I'm okay with that you are the president, you did it. But I want to ask Mr. Brian Rivera, when last December, he came with 11 points, when somebody has put that reduction of six minutes, he was very vocal, he says that he encouraged public participation, and he was very quiet and silent when you removed the public rebuttal. I wish Brian will question his precedent to ensure that why you are curtailing the three-minute rebuttal of somebody that who is asking the question, because obviously, once I leave after six minutes, somebody gives me some false information, there is no question for me to come back again. So you guys are removing an opportunity for a resident to clarify that. So, having said this, that's my peace of mind today. And Dr. Breagan, and I would like to request you to look at Hoboken School referendum. I think it's very expensive, 200K per student, but it's a state of odd buildings and everything, fabulous. I, it's very impressed, but obviously with Edison, we will not be able to do that kind of thing. But with the kind of limited structure that you guys have taken certain steps, Lincoln and JP and others last year, I hope, at least we'll address, hopefully in the next two years, this overcrowding issue. So I'll, you know, the BOE presidents will coming and going, some of the BOMs are not coming, and I think we look up to you as a standard person to see how we, you can help the overcrowding, who, irrespective of who is at the helm of BOE. And Virginia White, I agree that parents' help desk have 1,000 tickets, but I think jury has said that, but we, I want to ask the same question. SLAs, do you have an SLA for 24 hours response time? And I myself opened a help desk ticket that laptop is not working. I didn't get a response in 24 hours, so I stopped creating it. So I'm directly reaching out to the school principal, vice principal. So you guys are actually making that help desk failure, because if they don't respond within six hours of the business hours, I think that you guys are not doing any service to the people. So the SLA, like laptop broken, should be fixed within 24 hours, or at least loaner should be given. If you guys have those kind of statistics like we do in the corporate, help desk will be successful. Otherwise, we'll keep on knocking the door of the principals and vice principals, we don't come to you. Because obviously, why should we talk to somebody who doesn't understand what my problem is? The third thing is, Shannon, thank you very much for leading the curriculum committee. Unfortunately, you were not given any opportunity this year. Hundreds of parents thanking you for allowing the kids to get into the honors, both in English and everything, and you brought a very good point, that those who couldn't get the, due to the COVID, those who are 15 days, 30 days, 45 days, couldn't come to the school. They have to, especially high schoolers, have to go to the community college to do the makeup course. I think it's a strong recommendation that if Edison Public School District can offer those gap courses to help students at no cost, that will be a great help that we are offering to our students, so that they will not be, you know, discouraged by the colleges, especially, you know, by going to different school altogether. Thank you very much. And Breagan, again, I say it, half year is over, and you only have two more marking periods. Thank you.
Board President, can I-
Thank you.
Can I say a few things?
Yes, Ms. Madiger.
First, Mr. Venkat Subarao Bandi, I am not, I, I'm not sure what you mean by relationship. When I got elected to the board in 2016, the Bush Law Firm represented us. So I don't understand, and I would, it would be helpful if you clarify what you mean by a relationship. Second, I have the legal costs for you, since the year 2014 and 15, I just pulled it in my email. So 2014, because I keep hearing Bush Law Firm getting million, $1 million, $500,000. So, so here are the costs that, that the previous business administrator, Dan Mishod, he sent it to me, when I asked for the legal costs. So in 2014 and 15, the total that the Bush Law Group got was $310,000 and 6, sorry, 310606. So about $311,000. This included $36,300, which was held by his firm for a settlement. Therefore, the annual amount was about $275,000. In 2015 and 16, the Bush Law Group total they got was $371,000. In 2016 and 17, the Bush Law Group got $302,000. In 2017 and 18, the total was $434,000, which included about $143,000 in trust for a pending settlement. Therefore, the annual amount was $291,500. So these are the legal, annual legal costs, and you can Oprah it or do whatever you want to do, but we did not spend $500,000 or a million dollars on the Bush Law Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madiger. Cristo?
So, Edison, relationship, what relationships? Could it be a relationship when you're out campaigning with the mayor, Matt Tuchin, at one of his events? I see a conflict interest there. That's a relationship. What other kind of, I'll leave that. I want to talk about more important things. You're not really newsworthy, Shivie, so I'm gonna move away from you. I want to talk about David Yee. He's- talk about David Yee. He's off the library board, David Yee, but David Yee's my hero, and it's a shame that we take him off the library board to replace him with this individual who was harassing David Yee, who was harassing Shannon Pang. I witnessed it with my own eyes for years, but the nepotism that goes on in this town, the racism, it's absolutely disgusting. I want to say, why is the cop here? Cops stopped coming here for quite some time. All of a sudden, Shivie becomes VP, Douglas becomes president, and they need the cop here to intimidate members of the public, just like when, right before public comment starts, he has his, he has his threatening members of the public. You need to stop doing that. You need to stop doing that with your disclaimer. I understand Shivie has you on a leash. I understand Sam Joshi, the NJEA, they all have you on a leash, but we as members of the public, we're supposed to come in here, give you a reality check, and cut that leash. You understand, you're not a dog. If you want to act like the president, act like the president, you'll get some respect. You want to come here and remove people's speaking time when parents and others wait once or twice a month to come in here to speak? And right now, we're talking about COVID-19. We're talking about issues like critical race theory, and you're cutting off people's speaking time? You should be ashamed of yourself. Brian Rivera, you ran, you were so adamant that you were against this, that you guys weren't the ones cutting down the speaking time to three minutes. Make no mistake, it was you guys. It was you guys. You might have not had nothing to do with it, but Shivie, Schneider, Burrell, behind the scenes. It certainly wasn't Jerry. Jerry, well, before I say on the 27th, the Holocaust Remembrance Day, it's a shame that the Human Relations Committee isn't meeting. Brian Rivera, I understand you're a member on there. Apparently, Joyce says the members aren't wanting to meet up. If you're not interested, if you don't want to meet up in those days, if you don't want to meet up, so we can say, hey, the 27th is Holocaust Remembrance Day, isn't that your job? If you don't want to meet up, drop out. Simply drop out. There are other members of the public that want to participate and are being canceled out. So if you're just going to take orders from Joyce, when Joyce says, hey, don't come, and you're just gonna follow those orders, just drop out. Simple as that. We don't need any more people on leash in this town. We don't need, that's something that we don't need. The Matutian Mayor's Law Firm lawyer, I'd like to say, I don't see your name up there, but I'd like to say, maybe you are the most qualified. I'm not attacking you. I'm attacking the process and the history of the Bush Law Firm. Around 2019, didn't you say it was Jerry and his pals conspiring with the Bush Law Firm? And now you're the one that brings them back in, right? Wasn't it you and your people that were saying that they were the most corrupt? I remember that. So it's just mind-boggling to me to see what's going on. Everything gets blamed on Jerry. Absolutely disgusting. Let me tell you something, Jerry. I like sometimes, you know, busting your chops here and there, but you know, I absolutely respect you. You would give us extra time just to bash you. That's the most American thing you can do. Shame on you, Douglas Schneider. Shame on you. Nobody wanted you. The only reason you got voted in is because the EDO, the Democrat, Sam Joshi, they put you on the line. Nobody knew who you were. Brian, the year before that, what did you get? 1,000 votes? 2,000 votes?
Almost 2,000.
2,000. Burrell, okay? I doubled that. Burrell, just so you know, the first time around, nobody even wanted you in. No, but not one member of the public voted you in. Only after this crazy COVID stuff, where you're possibly giving people drugs that could kill them, and they're still hero worshiping you. Absolutely disgusting, the situation that we live here today. I don't understand, Bregan, how the teachers' union can attack you. Wasn't this COVID shot supposed to save them all? Didn't they take their shots? Aren't they trying to force the boosters on everybody? Now, now we gotta go remote? Absolutely disgusting. There are people with IEP, there are special needs kids, and they do need a place to go. So I want to, good thing you did that. But I want you to be honest. Who told you to do the speaking time to three minutes? Was it Shivie? Was it Shivie, and then she was telling, she was mind manipulating everyone? It was Jerry? This has to stop. This politics has to stop. You know what I think? I want us to build on property that we already have. What they want to do is they want to buy property from politically connected people and spend 10 times more. That's the game here. That's why you're removing people's speaking time. Who's that property that you're gonna buy it from? Is it connected to anyone from the EDO, Douglas Schneider? Make no mistake, I, I don't, I think everything you did with bringing the attorney, removing the other attorney, first thing you did, everything you're doing, you're Shivie's dog, Shivie has you on a leash, you should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you.
You should liberate yourself.
More public comments. Tony?
Liberate yourself. Be free. Be free. Stop being a dog.
Tony, thank you.
Tony DeBisquell, Tupine Street. I brought this up a few years ago, and I just want to bring it up again, because it's, I'd actually like to hear, if possible, through the chair, the opinion of the lawyer on this, if possible. So there is a social media group out there that is using the Edison Public School logo, and the description of the group, it says, "This group is created for school board members to hear suggestions and concerns from parents about the Edison School District and share educational-related issues." So what I'm confused about is, is the logo of a school district, is that copyrighted? Or can anybody just use that? Because, and I can show it to you right here, this is it. And the ironic thing is, is actually two board members actually run it. I'm not gonna name whom they, who they are.
I'll name it, it's okay.
But I'm just curious, because again, it's the logo, and I brought this up at the council meeting about theirs, and they said they do have a policy stating that that can't be used. And if there isn't a policy, I'm just curious why the board wouldn't have a policy stating that, or copyrighted, or whatever can be done, for safety, because again, the description of this group, it's basically saying that it's created for school board members to hear suggestions. Well, are all school board members in this group? If they're not, then to me, there is, you know, there's just this place only for certain school board members to be allowed to, and with WhatsApp, you're invited to that group. So you don't have to invite everybody, you can only invite two, three people if you want to. So if not everybody in, on the board is on here, this description is basically saying, in general, it's for school board members to hear from the parents. So I, I think that, you know, this really needs to be looked at. Just because it's, it's showing to me, this is a representation of the school district. And, you know, and this happened, I emailed somebody in the school district about, about something that was close to this, that I was looking to put out there to parents. And, you know, it was said to me that, yeah, this probably wouldn't be a good idea, because it's not really represented by the school, and, and I totally agreed with that. But I just wanted to inquire, just to see if it was possible. So again, I really think we need to safeguard our, our logo and our name, and, you know, it just would be nice to, for you guys to look into it, like I said, create a policy, if possible, to not use the logo, especially board members, on social media. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Ms. Conway? I'll see you, sir, next. I see you, both of you.
You can have my name, Elizabeth Conway, 20, in other words, circle.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Nice to see you here.
By the way, welcome. I was actually looking forward to you a few years ago, and I did not get a chance. So, welcome.
Thank you.
I have just three things. First thing is, I'm just being picky, but I'm asking, for the minutes, Ms., through the chair, Ms. Gluck, since Mr. Rivera and Mr. Schneider were not on the board in December, should they have abstained on the minutes? Was my first question. The second thing, I know Ms. Pang had brought up, and Ms. Podolsky brought up, and I'm just following on their items that they'd wish for. I know we have the Start Strong program, and I think it's phenomenal, and I, and I thank you strongly, but I'm wondering if we could also continue to have Get Stronger, Finish Up Stronger, or Helps Get Stronger on, for the children, because even though the children are back in school, it's still a very iffy year, and I think any extra help, either during the school year or during the summer, I think we may need another summer to give them extra support. Thank you. Reinforcement. See? Everybody's thinking. My third thing is the one that I don't like, that I didn't want to bring up, but I'm gonna say it anyway, or you wouldn't know who I am. I'm very disappointed in the board that I was the only one that kind of questioned the appointment of the J.P. Stevens softball, knowing that we do have, and I don't know for a fact, that there were people within applying until tonight. I know there were people that were supposedly, and it's sad to hear that we took from without, regardless if they went to the school. They're not employees of our district, and if our employees are willing to do it and anxious to do it and came forward, I would prefer offering it to them, because the relationship with the students would be stronger that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Sir, with the white mask.
Yeah, hello, everybody. This is the first time I came here, and I don't know. So I have like lot many questions.
Can you just adjust the microphone, sir?
Okay.
You could just pull the microphone down towards you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So I was watching all meeting, last, last meeting. So I had so many questions about what like so many parents came discussing about remote hybrid and all that, right? So we know that the kids, they have gone through so like pandemic, so much painful, that was depression and everybody, it was everybody, right? So for that reason, I think in person, my, my kids also wanted to come to school in person, so that's, they like it, so. But when we had a situation, right, so pandemic, right, it starts always, the cases goes from like, since Thanksgiving Day until like middle of January, right? So we need to be more cautious, like when the cases are going up, right? So, so we have to see that, we have to, somewhere we have to adjust. Our schools are overcrowded, and we want to make sure that there are less infections at the school level. And we need to make sure that we can make it hybrid or some other way or remote, because we want to protect our kids. Our kids are like, it's not, our kid means it's entire township students. Okay? So we want to protect their health, because we don't want to get infected, and they have a future health issues, because if they have complications, they'll suffer whole life, right? So it was, you know, so many parents came to have a remote hybrid, but it was not listened to them. So that's one of the thing. But our school system is producing, like in this period, right, they're not producing talents, they're producing, you know, sick patients. That's one thing. And our school reputation is not, you know, it's impacted. So we're not thinking about school reputation and also the ratings. Our school ratings are going down for years, so it's not improving. But school reputation is not improved with these two weeks or three weeks. You know, when our school ratings and reputation is high, means that reflects our township name in the state. So we have to think that we are taking a risk, students to come in and then have the health issues. We, they're not gaining anything, but they're, like, most of the kids may be good, some of the kids may not be good, but maybe they are learning at the fear, you know? I have to come, I have to learn. There is no other way. So that's one thing. And... So anything that we, something, right, our last meeting, right, when I was looking at it, I was really feeling that his, our school comes under dictatorship or racism, because most of the kids, they are like Asian right here. So that's one of the feeling that I had it, why we are running this school, because when the state said that township can take their own decision based upon what they want to do it. But we were just relying on that, you know, the parents will ask to continue and all that. But still, kids came to the school, right? We opened it, we, kids, all kids came. So that's where it is. So when we, it is a voice, it is a voice to see that we have to, when to make it hybrid or remote, that's important, because we had more than 600 cases in the school in just two weeks. And if you see last week, it is very minimal. So that's one thing. But there are some other things also. The school, our school infrastructure is really, you know, old, old age, and we have not improved for so many years. Our bathrooms, toilets, everything is a manual, because when I go to other schools, right, like last 10 years, I've been like to many schools for, you know, my kids' programs and all that. Many of them have like, you know, all touchless. Everything bathrooms is touchless. Most infected infections that can happen in the cafeteria and bathroom level. So bathrooms, like toilets, all are like manual. So that has to be replaced first, because COVID will stay here, it is going to be, we have to live with it. And that, we have to fix as early as possible that our schools are protected, our kids are protected. When our kids are protected, when our staff, school staff is protected, means our school is safe. Our schools are not safe because of the overcrowding. So this has to be like focused first on how, wherever like minimal expenses are required, those we need to upgrade. And then also, you know, our air conditioning, those we have to get, you know, all the air that comes in from the school gets heated and come back. So it has to be like, you know, virus we have to kill at the intake level only. So that's what I feel. And there are some other ways. I think there was, last call, when I was meeting, I was watching, right, all the kids were, came, and they were talking about, you know, what they have it, what they think about it. So even some parents also asked for survey.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Menesh?
Thank you, sir. Dr. Bregan, I'm gonna go back to you and Mr. Schneider. Last week, I didn't have enough data, but I did check into it. J.P. Stevens has two streets that almost touch its corners. One is Miller Avenue and Harrell Avenue. If you open up that, I think we could take 200 students out of there at 3 o'clock, and they could come in through that street in the morning. You just have to open it one hour, and some of your traffic off Grove and off the bridge will be away from that. And maybe we could fix our immediate issue of traffic. Getting back to my music program, I did more survey on it. Yes, last week, I think I mixed the numbers, but J.P. Stevens do need about 210,000 to 215,000, and Edison needs about 190,000 to 195,000. Let me tell you why they need it, because I did talk to one of the person who gives me the most info is my son. And he says, Dad, all our instruments are from 1980s, because he's been there for four years, he dealt with two... two of the directors and he was always there. Old Susis are from 1980. That was the last time we purchased Marine Buzz 2. Two days ago, I believe there was an event here in J.P. Stevens where they, I believe they do national, everybody comes in for the national program. And one of the gentlemen from South Brunswick School laughed at us, really laughed at us. Why? Because we don't have Beretone. We didn't buy Beretone since 1950s or 60s maybe, all right? We don't have it. And I think you should talk to the directors and you will see it. I had a pleasure of, last time I came into this music room, about two years back, when I used to come for meetings. And if you go and look at it, I'm 100% sure none of you went there, but I would ask you to pay visit. They're there after 2:40, all the way up to 4, 5 o'clock. And you will see awards all around. You will find easy 1,000. If I ask my principal who's sitting back there, she will say, yes, it is 1,000 or plus. We are one of the top schools who's fighting against South Brunswick and others. And you know, our students go there, work hard, and they don't have equipment that works. I'll give you a little story of Rutgers in 2018, where I was standing next to Dean Nicola and he says, oh damn. And I said, what happened, Dean? He says, one of the student's second pin is not working and he can't play the unit correctly. And he asked the student when he came out off the field, when the program was over. And he says, yes, sir, it didn't work. The next day, he had to call somebody to fix it. The student gets scared because he thinks teacher's going to yell at him. Of course, Dean is very good with the kids, so he spoke to him and said, don't worry, I understand it didn't work. But the student gets scared when they cannot play it right. They missed a bit. So, my humble request to you, time and time until this money comes through, that please help. We need, I'll give you one other thing is, South Brunswick, they spent $200,000 on middle school equipments. And we can't give it to our kids for last 10 years? And one of my buddies was sitting on this bench, same position that you were, you are sitting, Mr. Douglas, Doug, and money was not transferred. Time after time, my requests went blind. The other thing is, we talked about 18-wheelers the other day. I did reach out to a couple of peoples. I will try to get you money for advertisement for three or five years, whatever your board agrees to it, and that pretty much pays off your trailer's cost. We might have a lot of expense for, at the end of the fifth and the sixth year, it will pay back the money that we are paying for the drivers and the maintenance and the insurance. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Minash. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. This is Pratima, 35 Manor Boulevard. My full name, Pratima Parab. And my two kids, my daughter goes to Middlesex County Vocational and Technical Schools in East Brunswick campus and my son goes to Woodrow Wilson. We are very close to our elementary and middle school, so my kids walk to school until now or I drop them off. This is the first year we are using the school transportation and our first time experience. We, I will try to break my problem into two periods that my experiences are. First one from the September to December and the next January onwards after the holidays. From September to December, we were on the bus EV1, sorry, EV3, that would take North Edison students that are going to vocational school after they drop off the JP schools to there. So, our bus will come at 8:00 after they drop off the JP kids. If they are late, our school bus comes late and our kids go to school late. On an average, my daughter spent at that time, she would wait maybe 15 to 30 minutes whether it was okay at that time at the stop. But after she gets on the bus, it takes maybe 45 minutes for her to get to school. So, within one hour, she was going. I think that is the average time every Edison kid is spending right now. I didn't have much complaint about that, though the buses were late majority of the time. In the evening time, they will not reach the school until after half an hour after the school ends, so kids are waiting outside. She will come home by 4:30, school ends at 3:30. So, it was again one hour average time. Only problem I had at that time, whenever the driver was absent for personal reasons, we will not have any communication from the district. The driver will tell the kids that tomorrow I'm going to be absent, so be prepared, there may not be a bus. And it happened twice time. I drove one other kid to school because her parents were at work and she could not go to school if I had not given her the ride. I drove my daughter because they were always, they will always talk to the driver, see what the plan is and then they will, otherwise they will miss the school. Now, this is the thing, we never had any communication from the district if the bus is not going to be there or it is going to be late. I remember I raised the ticket on the parent help desk. At that time, I did not receive any response till date. And I heard from you today, 85 tickets are there for transportation, 83 are open. So, that tells, you know, how we are working. Next period, I would say January to onwards. So, after the school reopened, first week, the school was remote for East Brunswick and they had, till today is 24th, they had 11 school days until now that are, they are in person. Out of 11 school days, four days, they missed the bus as we did not know. They have combined the routes for EV1 and EV3. EV3 is North Edison, EV1 is South Edison. Now, there are 23 kids on that bus. The first stop is at Featherbed Lane, that is 7:00, 6:00 a.m. in the morning. School starts at 9:00. And when they do all the kids on the route, they don't get to school before 9:30. So, first four days, we didn't even know that our school time is changed. I mean, the scheduled bus time is changed. Earlier, it was 8:00. 8:00, she used to go at 7:55. She is waiting there in cold, almost for 30 minutes, waiting for the bus and then calling me, Mom, the bus is not there. I will pick her up, I will drop her to school. That happened four days. Then I thought something is wrong, so I called the bus company and they told us, now your time is 30 minutes earlier than the earlier schedule. No communication again from transportation. After, next day, she went to the stop, yes, the bus came and they reached probably around 9:30. She got a excuse, bus late that day. Next three days, the bus, she's thinking that yes, the bus will come at 7:30. She's there from 7:30. Three days, the bus did not come. Why? Because first four days, she was not at the stop when they were coming. They thought there is no, cannot the stop, they skipped the stop. Now, these are the facts told by the bus company, that three days, the bus did not come to our stop or a stop before us. And they reached school in time because they were skipping the stops. Now, again, I will come back to it. 11 school days, four days we missed because we did not know the schedule. Three days, the bus did not come because they thought we are not there. Next four days, when I called the bus company and that is the day, 14 degree Fahrenheit, she's standing there 30 minutes, then getting on the bus, going to the school late, and she's telling me I could not feel my legs.
Ma'am.
When I was walking into this, yeah, it's almost over.
No, 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 no. I want to ask you some questions. Can you just stop her time? Thank you. I just want to understand the process from a parent point of view. So, you had some transportation issues, obviously. So, you, at that point, your first call was to who? What are the parent, is that to the Transportation Department?
Jim Burke is for vocational, yes, Transportation Department. Jim Burke is the vocational schools representative from the transportation. I called Nobly Dick's-
So, that, you call the office-
Yes.
-of the school at that point, or do you call the central administrative?
No, I, I called the Transportation Department-
Transportation.
-and his extension. I left voicemails as well.
And then, so you leave a voicemail with them?
Yes.
Nobody picked up the phone?
Nobody picked up.
Do you-
Did anyone call you back from Mr. Burke's office?
No, no.
So, nobody called you back?
Yes.
Now, you put in a parent help desk ticket?
Yes.
And when was that?
Probably last Friday.
So, last Friday, so approximately, whatever, three days ago?
Yes.
And now, has anyone responded to that?
No. I don't know if it is in junk. I have not received in my regular mailbox yet.
Right.
No callback either.
I, I just wanted to be clear. You could start the time again. Sorry to interrupt your train of thought. If that's okay.
Okay. Then I wrote email to Transportation again. There is a chain. None of the board members were CC'd on that, but all the Transportation Department and the school principals, everybody was that. When, when we had this problem that there was no bus showing up and then after that, it started showing up. I am noting the times. I'm going to send an email stating all the times when the bus came in and when got to the school. This is only morning I'm talking. Same thing happens in the evening. The kids are getting on the bus at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, reaching school at 9:30, missing their first period, half of the first period or their workshop. And there are seven kids probably from North Edison that are going. For South Edison, probably did not change anything. But North Edison, since, you know, after those eight kids are on the bus, they were going to the school directly. Now, they go all the way around the South Edison, then go to school. I don't think they can make it to school in time if they have to make all 23 stops. So, this combination of bus is not working. It has to be a reasonable time. They're spending two and a half hours on bus in the morning, they're spending two and a half hours on the bus in the evening.
Thank you. Let me, let me ask you, the EV1 and EV3, that is a north and a south route combined? Do we know that?
I don't want to speak out of turn because I don't have all the information, but can I ask you, Dr. Adarelli, could you get this parent's number? We will call you tomorrow and try to put this to bed. I know there's a lot of concerns and-
Yeah, I mean, I, I tried to keep my emotions away, but I'm not able to.
No, and I understand. Listen, like your, your kids are supposed to get to school.
Yes.
Right? So, I think everything you said is extraordinarily valid.
And let alone my personal things. I have second kid who goes to Woodrow Wilson when I'm dropping my daughter all alone. So, I'm not even looking at him, what he's doing after I leave to drop her off to school. My daughter is a competitive figure skater. She has three hours of practice, four days out of five days.
We're going to talk, we're going to talk after.
She's not able to reach.
I, I don't want to extend the time, but I, we will talk after. And is this your email? You're, you're the-
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I sent you email yesterday.
So, we have all of their information, including their phone numbers, and Mr. Cohen had responded, but we should follow up. So, we have your information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a serious concern. And to be honest with you, we, we have a, a community member who's compiled a list of items for us to go throughout these meetings. I mean, it's obvious that transportation is, is an issue. And it's not acceptable for our children not to get to school. Period. There's bus, bus driver shortages, there's all kinds of issues. However, it sounds to me like communication is lacking. And we don't need bus drivers to give you a call. So, I think that we have to do a little bit better, or a lot better. And we'll, we'll talk about that in this board. We'll put that as a priority. I think, based on all the communication we've received via email and everything else, it seems like transportation kind of hit a lull for a while and now it's, it's active again in that we're, we're not doing a good job. So, we'll talk about that.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Patel.
So, to that note, I want to comment that, Dr. Bregan, there is more than one parent who raised concerns specifically about the Academy Bus and more about East Brunswick. And yes, I understand it's all because of shortage of drivers and the combining and lack of buses and everything. But yes, there is quite some buzz, more buzz about the Academy buses than regular buses that I have heard personally. So, if you can, please look into it tomorrow. Thank you.
We will definitely look into that route and see what we can do.
Thank you. Any other public comments right now? Mr. Revnik?
Hello again. First of all, I just want to mention, because Mr. Burke's name was mentioned, Mr. Burke was on a medical leave up until last week. So, if there wasn't a call and it was prior to that, that could be a reason why. I'd like to welcome Mr. Rubin, I believe it is, the new attorney.
It is.
You have a very impressive resume. Welcome aboard to Edison and hopefully you'll have a nice working situation. We may disagree on some things like what happened tonight, but that's okay. We have a process to follow as do you. Mr. Rivera, I'd like to thank you for clarifying some things about the math department, you know, and the teachers right now that are overburdened with covering classes in point twos and everything else and times, things, getting things into timely fashion. And sometimes there's other things. For example, Mr. Shi probably isn't aware, we lost Wi-Fi here at J.P. Stevens for almost a full day last week. So, you couldn't enter anything on that day. We didn't have access. In addition to that, I believe the number was eight teachers from JP that had COVID since we've been back. And until last week, it was a 10-day quarantine, not a five-day. So, people are out on sick days. We don't work on sick days. We asked, we wanted to get the district to allow us to teach at home and they would have agreed to that. So, basically, there's reasons why also, but I do appreciate you bringing up the, you know, times we're in here with the class coverages and people right now that are overstressed to begin with. I did want to address one other thing, and that was at the, after I spoke before, I'm not going to get into a quote pissing match here. It's not what it's about and I don't want to. Dr. Bregan and I know each other for quite a long time. He knows I'm a straight shooter. You may not like what I say and many of the board members I know for a number of years, but you're going to get the truth from me. I'm not fabricating anything. I'm not like, I have no vested interest other than the fact that I am the vice president of a union that people pays dues to, and I'm the grievance chair. And one of my responsibilities is to enforce the contract. As Dr. Bregan has put up to us a number of times, the integrity of the contract. And that's what we're looking at, as far as the integrity of the law. So, you know, we're doing our job. It's nothing personal. I don't like being, you know, like it's almost saying it's sound personal. I have no vested interest. Personally, I prefer that we don't have, I don't have to come up here and speak. I'd rather be sitting home and watching this on the livestream personally. It takes me 40 minutes, 45 minutes to get here and get home. I'd rather be using that time in a different way. We did meet. You offered to meet with us. We met on Friday for an hour and a half and this was one of our topics. And there was also some back and forth correspondence via email. We are always willing to meet. We are always willing to work with this district as an association to work out issues. We've done that back when there was financial constraints and we had to give back. We did that when we got screwed over with the health insurance. We came and worked together to come to an agreement for that. We're always willing to sit down and talk and work things out. So, I just want to make that clear. We did have a meeting Friday. Personally, I felt very good walking out of it. I didn't feel so good on Monday morning or Monday afternoon. So, quite honestly, on my way home, I told my wife, I'm so fed up with things, I'm going to retire. Probably one of the first times I've ever said that. And if I'm offered a job like I've been in the past, now I would think about taking it. And that's sad. You know, morale's a big thing. Right now, the morale, get a sense of what your staff feels. And I'm not only talking about athletics. I guarantee you the move today, the morale of the coaches in this district just plummeted. Other issues going on, they're plummeting. The overburden, overwork of your staff, right now, there's people that are asking for leaves, there's people that are resigning. There's a reason for that. And I still say it's a pretty darn good place to work more than most other places. But it sure as heck isn't the same as it was 30 years ago when I, or 33 years ago when I started. We started around the same time. Whether you'd agree or not, I don't know. But anyway, to find, I want to finish up with Happy Lunar New Year to all of you that applies to, you're the tiger, and everybody enjoy the holiday next Monday. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Revnik. Any other public comment? Move to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Patel, second?
Second.
Ms. Mattiger, second?
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolski?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Mattiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion is carried.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.